Good evening. I'd like to call this December 11th regular meeting of the Lee County Board of Commissioners to order. At this time, I'll ask Commissioner Dotson to give the indication and lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I'd like to ask you, would you like us to lead us to the prayer?
Let us pray. Our Father in Heaven, as we bow before You, we praise You for this time of the year and all that it means to us and to our families. And the cards we send and the cards we receive and on our buildings, we see the word peace. And we know that we won't have good and perfect peace until we know the Prince of Peace, the Lord Jesus Christ. So today, as we bow before You and Your Son, the Lord Jesus, celebrate this wonderful time of the year. Help us to remember our brothers and sisters in Florida that have no home to visit, no home to be in, no home to have a Christmas tree. We pray for their comfort, their peace, and their guidance. Thank you for our leaders here tonight, our commissioners. Give them wisdom, Lord, and guide them and direct them. Give them peace of heart, peace of mind, and show them the way. You know the way and You are the way. Guide them and direct them so that they will lead according to Your will. Thank you for this time that You have blessed us with, and we celebrate it in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're now going to begin with the organizational part of the meeting. At first, we need to elect a chairman for the upcoming year and a vice chairman. Before we do that, we do need to decide how the board wishes to vote. It can be by voice, rising ballot, or show of hands. Is there a motion?
I think we just do it by voice.
Any discussion?
You still need the signatures on the form.
Well, if you don't, if we don't do the ballot, we don't have to fill it out. We just put it at your seat in case you chose to.
That's what it makes you.
So, all those in favor of voting by voice, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. At this time, I'll open the floor for nominations for chair.
I'd like to nominate Ms. Aaron, her uncle, for chair and chair.
Any other nominations?
Move the nominations to be closed.
Vote on nominations being closed. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now, all those in favor of Commissioner Donovan for being chair for the upcoming year, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This time, I ask for nominations for vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Doc Odom for vice chair.
Any other nominations?
Move to close nominations.
Is there, all those in favor to move to close nominations, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All those in favor of Doc Odom as vice chair, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The third item of business is for the board to determine the meeting time, date, and place for the regular meetings for this upcoming year. Are there any motions?
We move to adopt the current schedule.
The first and third Mondays at 6:00 PM for this meeting. Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Lastly, the board must approve the official bonds for the following employees for the year. The sheriff in the amount of 25,000, registered deeds for 50,000, and every other officer of the county who is required by law to give a bond for the faithful performance of his or her duties, which includes the tax administrator in the amount of 100,000, the finance director in the amount of 100,000, and any employee who handles $100 or more at one time. Are there any motions?
Move to approve.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? At this time, I will turn the meeting over to Chair Donovan.
Thank you, Ms. Parrish. Okay, thank you very much. Are there any additional items to the agenda? One thing I did speak with Ms. Davidson about if we would want to move Item B under new business to consent agenda. Okay.
Which item was that?
She's, she's still going to be here when we address it during the budget.
Which item was that?
Under new business, Item B.
Item B?
Yeah, because we've already approved it. But she, in case a question comes up, she will be here for the budget amendment. Okay? Any other additional items? All right. Is there a motion?
Motion that we approve here. Consider agenda with the agenda.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. And the approval of the consent agenda.
Chair, I make a motion that we approve tonight's consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, public comments. Mr. Keith Clark. And two, three minutes if there's very short time. Good evening. Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Keith Clark, 306 Village Drive of Sanford, North Carolina. Let me say first that I'm here, we're together for two reasons. I was the first person to propose a magnet school in downtown. And I understand that this board is not the final decision maker in the site of schools, but it is responsible for the financing, the terms, and safety of those finances. I have no objection to that site to support a magnet school. I do object to construction of large buildings that I feel will detract from the unique design of the Rosenwall School. And more importantly, you're not looking at the school that made the difference. You have to know the history to know it made the difference, but if you don't know the difference, you don't know what you're looking at. But I have other concerns, and they will end up with your responsibility for financing. There has been no decision on the extent of the mixing between magnet and attention zone. There is no research, essentially no research, on the outcomes of mixed attendance zones and magnet schools. Most of the comparison, overwhelming amount of research has been done on charter versus magnet and magnet versus non-magnet. The reason for the comparison is the unique things about the charter and the private is the parents are in control of that school and that curriculum in regards to that school or part of the school. Now, this gives, this is why the standard practice is it takes, is three years to develop a school. The first year is spent, is recommended to be spent on involving the public in determining the extent of the demand and the nature of the demand. Because if you don't get it right, you can't, you won't have those students there. Or, and you'll have overcrowding in other places and so forth. At this point, in addition, there's been no public comment as to expectations. In fact, the school board only posted on its website the first time when they knew it was getting ready to be criticized for me for it. They didn't manage to get part of what's up there before I looked at it, but they added the answer to another question after I asked. They published a regular publication called Inspire. Not one page of one edition has been spent on gathering that critical appointment or. Oh, the time's up. Oh, boy, that went faster than I thought.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Okay. Now into old business, Mr. Crumpton with the 2017 concealed carry survey.
Yes, ma'am. At the board's November meeting, I was asked to do a concealed carry survey of the employees. After leaving the meeting, it was decided that we would survey all the full-time people and most part-time employees. And after speaking with the sheriff, he decided that his results would probably skew the results for the rest of the county, and he decided not to participate in the survey. Plus, they're in a building that does not allow concealed carry anyway, so he decided not to participate. So there was roughly 295 employees that were eligible to take the survey. 238 took it for a response rate of 80%, which was probably pretty good considering we only gave the employees a week to complete it. But it wasn't the first time that they had heard, you know, this issue, and it wasn't the first time they had been involved in it. So, we felt like we would get pretty good response from them, which we did. So, the results are in here. In the essence of time, I'm not going to go over each one, but in general, I think if you break it down by department and by building, you would see that probably the biggest issue with concealed carry is in this building here. With DSS, tax, and the health department being located here, and the clientele that they serve, I'm sure it's a concern for the employees here of allowing weapons in the building. And a lot of the comments that came from the employees involve security measures and wanting to see basic security in the building instead of weapons in the building. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions. I did write a memo to the board, and I appreciate the board asking me for my opinion on this matter. And, you know, my opinion was solely based on that of an employer and, you know, not my personal opinion on concealed carry.
So I've got one question. On page 64, the, it says outside of concealed carry, what other suggestions do you have that would make the facility safer for employees and the public? And there's, I don't know, 10 or 12 responses listed, but are those responses listed in the order of the, I guess, the individuals that were surveyed? Is there any weight to them as far as to the order that they're printed?
Yes, sir. It's just, you know, how it.
It's a variety of the responses you got.
Yes, sir.
I mean, because like the first one, law enforcement on premises, I would expect that to be the number one recommendation from, you know, an employee's response.
Or higher security.
Yeah.
You could have lumped that, those two together.
Right.
You know, we didn't go into the in-depth of, you know, how many we received, which we could go back and look at that, but.
No, I just wondered if there was a priority listing from the suggestions and number of times that individual response was received.
I will say this. One of the, the first question that was really interested in whether people felt safe at work. You know, and so we got a pretty high number that felt safe already at work, which I thought was a good, good indication of, you know, most areas, you know, people don't really think about it a whole lot. So, you know. But these were the, you know, on page 64, these were probably the ones that came up first and most often, so.
I might be going to have an extra security cameras that indicate where they thought we could use those, yeah?
Well, here, I think some people would like to have, you know, we've discussed in staff meetings, they would like to have them in hallways and more in the building. We had an incident recently, so I installed cameras at the Summit Building. We've installed new cameras at the Government Center, done some camera installations at the library. So we're trying to put more in place at our buildings, but it is expensive. And the way we accumulate the data, we use it through fiber. So if we have fiber at a building, it's a lot cheaper than, than if we try to do it another way. So, there's been some discussion about our parks and greenways and putting cameras there. And that's probably one of those things we'll have to, have to address at some point.
The one thing that jumped out at me while reading through that was if we don't put the concealed carry in place in our buildings, we're not, we're not liable.
We should not be liable, yes, sir. Yes, sir. It's, yes.
That's where I was getting.
You're given the choice by the legislature to either do it or not do it. And based on that, you know, authority, you know, anybody, anybody can sue us for anything. You know, the, the real question is will we win or will we lose? And whatever this board decides, you're not, you're not going to lose over that. You have to show gross negligence. And we had a lot, had another discussion with the risk management folks last week, met on Thursday as a board. And it's a, it's an interesting issue because there aren't a lot of cases out there on this matter. Matter of fact, when I threw the scenarios that I threw out them to them, they just said, look, there haven't been any lawsuits like this. So, there's, there are not a lot of local governments that allow concealed carry. There are 11 counties in the state. I do not know how many municipalities. I have not found many that allow it. So this is really more of a county issue, so.
You say you found many or you found any?
I haven't found any municipalities. So, you know, we, we did a survey and tried to find out. Michael, help me with that.
Let me ask you about the Greenway.
I know with Durham, you know, they've had problems with that tobacco trail. Have we had any incidents, did you know of, with our Greenway?
Not that I'm aware of. But the legislature does allow concealed carry on the Greenway. That was in the, in their law.
Goes between the city and the county?
Yes, absolutely. It does not matter the ownership. So on the Greenway, really in Parks and Rec, concealed carry is not allowed where there's a organized recreational event, I think is what it is. So, you know, the outdoor facilities pretty much can allow concealed carry. Unless, you know, we have an interesting dynamic at Southernly, Sandley Middle Schools there where we share those ball fields with the, with the K-12 system. Not allowed to have concealed carry at a K-12 system, but that's our property that we share with them. So, you know, would concealed carry be allowed there when the ball games aren't going on? I don't know. That's one of those convoluted areas that we don't know about. But General Parks, Sandley Nature Center, concealed carry would be allowed. Except in that building, because you said no. The approach is right, and you can't do it in the building, but they could do it out on the trails.
Concealed carry or open carry as well?
I'll have to look at the attorney on the open carry.
Open carry, you can prohibit it in public-owned buildings, and then the statute says on grounds or parking areas of those buildings or in public parks or recreation areas.
You could do concealed.
Open carry, you can ban it, yeah. But the concealed carry, as Mr. Crumpton indicated, you can prohibit it on the recreational facilities, which is defined by statute to include athletic fields and pertinent facilities, but only during the scheduled organized events, swimming pools and their pertinent facilities, and then facilities used for athletic events, including Manala and Intuit Gymnasium.
It gets complicated. And then when you look at the buildings that we actually occupy that it impacts, you know, you get down to about five or six buildings that it would impact. And obviously can't have it at the courthouse or any courthouse-related facilities. And that's another big area that's high occupation.
So, if one of our recreational buildings that, I'm going back here and looking at our notes, say the Health Center, the old armory. You could, if, if you're having volleyball or basketball in there, no concealed carry. But if somebody rented it for a private party, how does that work?
Well.
That's what, that, that's where I'm just like, it's almost too complicated. And I, and I'm like Commissioner Sharp, the liability, you know, the liability issue just scares the daylights out of me for, to open the county up to being sued and our insurance not covering.
I think the gymnasium, because I think you would classify the Armory as a gymnasium, you could probably prohibit. you could probably prohibit concealed carry un, under that third prom, because the one about the organized athletic events is more for the athletic fields.
Okay. Mm-hmm. Okay.
Indoors versus outdoors.
Okay.
You know, it's kind of how I read the statute, even though it's, once again, it's-
And there's not many like-
One of those things that, you know, until something happens, you're not going to know-
You're not know for sure.
For sure, but, um-
Cause there's not many annotations to the, the statutes, so there's no case, cases that-
And that's made it difficult for us to change signage at the parks. We've had some comments about, "Well, you don't have signage up at the parks." Well, to be honest with you, I don't know what to put up yet. And, uh, others don't really know what to put up either, because you start putting all those exceptions on a sign, people aren't going to read all those exceptions.
Right.
So, you know-
They're going to see that they can or they can't, right.
How do you, how do you do that?
Well, one thing you do is you advise the public to know what the law is as it relates to the property. I mean, that shouldn't be the county's responsibility for you to know the law if you choose to come on the grounds where the signs are already posted.
And I just, that's, I got, I got a dumb question, I think, is how do you, if it's a concealed carry, how do you know if someone's got a weapon on them?
If they're doing it right, you don't.
You tell you, he won't, if someone comes in with a sixty-round medic gun.
I don't know. That's, it's one of those-
Has, you know-
Difficult situation.
Commissioner Dotson has-
Mr. Concealed carry, I'll be-
Has experience with this. Commissioner Sharp, uh, in probation, um, and we have Sergeant Estes here.
Who has spoken to our, Sergeant Estes has spoken to our employees in the past-
Yes.
...
Has there, is there, I mean, there's studies and statistics, I guess, for everything. But is there some comprehensive study, um, concealed carry as far as protection versus a taser or pepper spray as far as protection? You know, if I'm walking on the trail, or if I'm at work and I feel like I'm in a dangerous situation, rather than shoot somebody to kill them, tasing them or pepper spray, I mean, is there any study like that?
Well, that's better.
That's why you have a good-
Or better than a sharp stick, but the thing is-
Yeah, oh, I agree.
Uh, you don't bring like the old saying goes, you don't bring a knife to a gunfight, you don't bring a taser to a gunfight.
I understand.
And the thing is, go back to what Doc said, how are we going to know? Well, that's just, and it goes to the bad guy, too.
Sure.
You don't, I mean, we have, and I, and like I say, I, I'm not going to fight this issue with a sign thing, I, I wouldn't even want to say anything, because it's already kind of been decided, I believe. But the thing is, obviously, I think, hopefully everybody agrees, a sign on the door is not going to keep a determined person coming in here to do whatever they want to do. I mean, that, that's laughable. You know, the only people that are going to obey that, Chairman, is, is law-abiding citizens. A criminal doesn't care, you know, and they care about your signs, you know, uh, we, and the thing is, as long as the county employees feel comfortable, feel safe, then let them feel that way. That's a, a little bit of a false sense of security to me, but, but then again, look at the line of work that I'm in, though. You know, so I'm a little, obviously a little bit biased, because this is all I do. It's a big part of what I do. I consult, you know, I do this and that, but, but, but I respect, hey, you know, it's, if, if, if that's okay with them, that's okay, just understand what you have. Um, you know, but, I mean, signs are on many buildings and things like that, and some people will not go in these, of course, I'm talking about places for profit, you know, that won't go in and patronize them, because they can't go in there and be allowed to protect themselves if something pops off. But, hey, if, if folks feel good about the signs, then, um, it's a feel-good thing, it's all it is, um, it's not anything that's going to protect.
Right.
Well, with the state probation parole, there's a continuum of force.
Mm-hmm.
You know, you know, there's a pepper spray, you know, and then you have a gun and, you know, you have, some corrections has baton, you got to know when to use it, so-
Levels, yeah, levels, levels.
And you got to make the right decisions, or you, you will be liable.
Yeah.
What about the other side of that? You don't have a sign at police stations and they get attacked. So, you can't regulate crazy, I'm sorry.
Well, you can't do that, you're right. You never have.
Yeah, you can't regulate crazy.
To always be grumpy.
Well, and the one thing, and I talked to the manager about it, and, and I, I think, Commissioner Reeves and I have a discussion, you know, I, I was pleased that most of our employees felt safe, but we had about seventeen percent that didn't feel safe. And I don't want to just let the numbers drive things. I want to concentrate on that seventeen percent and figure out how we can make them feel safe. You know, I, just, just looking at the suggestions that they made with, you know, law enforcement on the premises, security, uh, or, or security officer, um-
They can't be in all places at one season, I'm sorry.
That's true. I mean, we can't have one on every floor in the buildings that we've discussed, um-
Somebody will decide, "I feel safe at home, just pay me."
Ah.
And I don't come with it. So, you, you have to look at all the possibilities and then prioritize based on the funding that we have available for those sort of things. You can't put it all in place at one time.
Exactly.
Now, like I said, you got a metal detector, which I know that may be cost prohibitive, but then basically what you're doing by having that is, and obviously an armed, you know, guard there, uh, not, I don't believe in unarmed security, that that's no such thing, you know, if they're armed or they're not. But then, I'm okay with that, because that means nobody comes in with a gun. Good guys or bad guys, nobody comes in. But like you say, Chairman, it may be out of budget, I don't know. I don't know how expensive that would be.
Yeah.
That, to me, that would be the ideal situation, you know, injured points coming in, you got to go through metal, or you're not coming in.
They would do that at the high schools for ball games and, well, even-
Good examples, when we were in Washington. My goodness, I, hey, I'm North Carolinian and I carry a pocket knife everywhere I go and I went into the, the aerospace museum and I put, I put all my stuff in, in the bowl, it went through, guy picks up a knife, looks at it and says, "Is this yours?" I said, "Yes, sir, come with me." Next thing you know, we're going to, they have their own police there. I'm like, "Oh, my goodness." You know, and I'm going to get in big trouble here, I might get arrested. And of course, you know, very, very nice, uh, police officer there and said, "Look, we'll keep it with you, but I can't promise you that the next, uh, museum you go in, you're going to be able to get it all." So, and then like I say, I had to understand, I was in a totally different environment than Washington compared to Carolina.
Right. Well, and that's, that's just like having-
But it's got all the weapons out, but-
That's right, that's right.
Get everything out.
That's right. Okay.
Was there a size or station?
Any discussion or, um, direction from here moving forward?
I mean, I definitely think we should consider, you know, options such as a metal detector or armed guards, because, um, I remember when I took concealed carry with Mr. Estes, one of the first things in comments that he made was, obviously, if you're in this class, you've already made the decision, you can take somebody's life. And that's been with me every day since that class. I've never gotten my permit. I intend to get my permit because societal changes, um, realizing that I can't take it everywhere. But, um, that stuck in my head as much as anything anybody's ever said to me, because I'd never thought about it that way. And that was a eye-opening experience, that Saturday morning. So, you know, that's, uh, that's something to really think about.
Well, I think we have, as a result of this survey, we have something to work from now. I think page sixty-four is a good first step for us to start considering as we prepare our budgets in the future. Uh, this would give everyone, not only in staff specifically who handle this, a chance to go back and maybe query some of the people on the things that they have been, had in mind.
Right.
And is this something we pick up at our retreat?
Yeah.
Hopefully, we can get some information, prices, ideas, feedback, more feedback from the staff. I just want us, I just don't want us to do a survey and then nothing, you know? You know, I mean, that, they were good enough to give their input and share with us and, and we need to take that and act on it.
Well, I always like to reinforce the fact that everything that we're talking about here has a price tag attached to it.
Correct.
We can't cover everything, but there are some of these items that we can reevaluate and start at one end or the other.
Yeah.
But prioritize some things and buildings that we won't cover it right away.
And I, I see some, a couple of things that doesn't really cost that much, as far as I know, like training, uh, providing training for an active shooter online, which, which is what I do every year, just a ten-minute video and, it's a constant, you got to do it every year, it's a constant reminder to what steps to take if you have something like that.
Well, I heard on the radio this morning, going to work, where they had to shoot men, um, I can't remember, because Arizona or New Mexico, wherever, but where the teacher-
New Mexico.
Slid a, slid a couch under the door and seventeen lives are believed to be saved because of her actions. And they actually interviewed her and she said, "You know, I've been doing this for a long time." And she said, "Those kids are my responsibility, whatever it took." And, you know, there are a lot of people out there, but planting an idea is worth a lot. I also wanted to thank, uh, Michael for the information he put together. I think he was responsible for the notebook that we got, but I read it, that's what I spent yesterday afternoon doing. And there's a mix in there of, you know, counties that allow concealed carry in parks, um, or, and, and in buildings, and then there's a, you know, ones that don't. And there's justifications in some of the readings and it made it, um, you know, I talked to Commissioner Dotson about this Saturday. It's really hard growing up with guns like I have and, and the mindset that I have as far as to being able to protect my family and thinking that I would be an individual that will be fine with a concealed carry. But that some of the justifications, you know, they talk about lawsuits, they talk about, um, taking someone's life and it, it makes you think, um, it makes it a really, really hard debate, um, one that I don't have a, a firm stance on, that I could say right now what we need to do. But I do agree with, uh, Commissioner Reeves, that we do have a list and we have a starting point and, um, I, I thank Commissioner Dotson for, uh, you know, his perseverance.
And education.
Yeah.
And Michael, wow, lots and lots of education.
Listen, Mr. Crump.
I learned a lot. That's a lot of reading, but, uh, much appreciated.
Well, the, the section in there with the common sense questions, I think we should put that on our, um, webpage for just the community to think about and realize that, you know, this is what the average person, the commissioners are asking, but this is what the average person asks also. And realize it's not cut and dried decision, yet we ought to do this or no we should.
I was going to ask Commissioner Dotson, he may know the answer to this. On some of these shootings we're having around the country, how many of them related to mental health issues? Do you know what the statistic would be?
I don't know what the percentage of it is, but, uh, I know it, it's there. It's there.
I attended a seminar this past week, or last week, and my eyes were open to the fact that we have, that's one of the problems we have.
Oh, absolutely. It's the same thing, how, how do you regulate something like that?
I heard a lady talk about her eighteen-year-old son in high school, getting ready to graduate, he'd had scholarships and, and she got a call one morning, he had, she had to come to school and get him. He had something happen, he just had a nervous breakdown, whatever. And she, and, and, uh, someone like that, uh, with a gun, you got a problem.
Yeah, we, uh, it was a couple years ago, we responded to a call where an individual was trying to run over a congregant at our church, it just happened, so I was seeing, this guy had been attending the church for a while, everything was fine, but he stopped taking his medication.
Right, that, that's-
Lord, I bless heart, the next day, he didn't even remember doing any of that stuff. We had to do an emergency commitment on him. And nobody got hurt that day, but could have been worse, that one with a gun, that was a car.
Yeah. Well, that was one thing that stood out to me, too, that I, there were like seven different items, um, that automatically eliminate someone from getting a permit. And there are responsibilities in there, like the clerk of court and all, within so many hours, depending on the judge's ruling, or people are supposed to be entered into that, um, database, the NICS, and, um, you know, I think that's one of the big questions out now, where that didn't happen and where someone received a dishonorable discharge or whatever.
Discharge.
And they were not in the database.
Yeah.
And so, that oversight caused a lot of people-
That was terrible, that the Air Force neglect didn't do that. Yeah. Okay, well, um, good debate and information and, um, thank you to the manager and staff for putting this together. I thought it was a great survey, um, gave us a lot of information, um, and we will certainly move forward with that, um, and get price, cost and all that kind of stuff and, um, and something that we can certainly put on a retreat. Um, okay, if there's anything else, we'll move on to the next item. Uh, request for approval of final bid, uh, I still can't get you, on Zero Ash Street, uh, Ms. Parrish.
Yes, um, this is the first point of reference, this is pin number nine-six-four-two-seven-six-eight-two-eight-six-zero-zero. Um, Mr. Julian Johnson, on October fourth, had submitted an offer on the property for five hundred dollars. It is jointly owned, um, with the city. Um, the city deeded that interest over to the county for us to, um, close on the property. Advertised the offer on October six, oh, no, October sixteen, excuse me, the board accepted the off, offer and authorized the offer to be advertised, which it was advertised in the Sabre Hill on November eighth. Um, we also sent letters notifying, uh, doing property owners of the offer, did get a couple inquiries about it, but no one submitted an upset bid. So, um, if the board accepts the offer as the final, um, from Mr. Dotson, then we can close on the property.
Sure.
Yes, sir.
I move to accept the final upbid on Zero Ash Street property.
All right. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye, opposed? Okay, thank you. All right. Consideration of a purchase agreement for the purchase of property, including nine parcels from the Ruby McSwain Trust, uh, Ms. Parrish, Mr. Crumpkin?
I'd be glad to take this one, Mr. Crumpkin.
Okay.
At least get it started. Um, we were approached by, uh, the Ruby McSwain, uh, Trust about parcels that, uh, were in the trust, uh, near the courthouse. And, uh, informally, we've had several discussions about, uh, purchasing the old firehouse building there next to the courthouse, um, as needed space around the courthouse. So, um, you know, in discussions, uh, with Lynn Blackman, uh, they wanted to sell properties in a block. Uh, we negotiated these nine parcels along Woodland Avenue, um, and Elm Street and, uh, just, you know, this really secures, uh, future property and future growth around the courthouse that if we didn't purchase this property at this time, we may not be able to purchase it in the future. So, um, we're obviously recommending approval and, uh, be happy to answer any questions and, uh, actually pretty excited about it.
Yep. Okay. Any questions or comments?
I move to approve the purchase agreement and authorize staff taking necessary action to finalize the agreement.
Okay.
I've got one question. The, uh, piece of property, I think, is this Spruce Street, it's got a building on it?
Yes, sir. Um, we're working with Mr. Blackman, we'll, and we'll probably be responsible for taking that building down, the one next to the, to the water tower. Yes, sir, that will be coming down. And it's not, it shouldn't take a lot to bring it down.
This is, this is parcel seven, right, the long, okay, yeah.
One more windstorm, we see that.
We have a, we have somebody that we use for building demolition out of Greensboro. It took down the, um, the building out at the Sandley Park and we will probably call him to help with, with that one. And then, um, on a couple other parcels, we have some old houses that we may try to sell off, a house and get them to be moved, so, um, on, yes, sir.
Yeah, one, two, and four, correct?
Ten.
The, the one and two, and then the four, I think, I think.
It's at West Spruce Street and Woodland Avenue and, uh- It's at West Spruce Street and Woodland Avenue and, uh, there are a couple of old rental houses there that really need to, that can be used by somebody else, but, you know, we probably try to sell them, um, and have them moved.
And it went by the old firehouse. I was walking around and I noticed they was taking some chandeliers out of there. I'm assuming that was okay and I think.
That was negotiated, yes, sir. Those were Ms. McSwain's and, and something that she wanted to keep and so those have been moved out to the farm. Yes, sir.
I think it's June thirtieth is the date for things to be.
Yeah, we gave them to June thirtieth, but he's working on it and it's going out a lot faster than he thought, so it will be empty sooner than not. But it will take us a while to evaluate the building. We already know that there are some issues that, that have to, um, be taken care of, um, but overall it's a good structure and, uh, it's thirty-seven thousand square feet. So it's much needed space and, uh, we'll add that to the Mosley architect that, contract that you're gonna, going to approve hopefully tonight and, uh, so we can get moving, 'cause I've had another call from the DA.
Are you looking at some of these coming apart, or?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to approve, um, oh, I'm sorry.
Have we, uh, for example, that firehouse station, have we done any recording of any of these properties' videos?
No, sir.
We probably should take a look at everything that we're purchasing and have a record of it.
Inside and out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Be glad to get that done.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the purchase agreement and authorize staff to take necessary action to finalize the purchase. All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Really important and good opportunity for the campaign. Um, okay, moving right along to item D, consideration of a proposal for legal services in developing oil and gas ordinance. Ms. Parrish.
Um, as the commissioners are aware, um, in November of this year, Lee County voted to extend the moratorium on oil and gas and mining development in Lee County for twenty-four months. Um, Chatham County, I think we've had some discussions about this, um, throughout the process of the moratorium, but, um, Chatham County also extended their moratorium for twelve months. Um, we are, Lee County is still in the process of updating the land use plan, um, and the moratorium also says that the county will need to make changes and updates to the unified development ordinance. Um, so we've worked with Chatham County and you'll see a proposal from Pointer Sproul, um, which is in here, which indicates that we will be assist, they will be assisting Chatham and Lee County in developing and drafting, um, land use ordinances that would be, um, in line with state law. This is obviously a very, um, specific type of environmental law that requires expertise and that's the reason why we are seeking, um, outside counsel to help with that. Um, Chatham, Chatham and Lee are a little bit different in the fact that we also adopted the mining as part of our moratorium, so you will also see a separate proposal. Um, I spoke with the attorney at Pointer Sproul, um, he drafted this for, um, for them to also do our, looking at the mining operations and our UDO and trying to make it consistent as well.
Good.
At this point, we're just asking the board to.
So what is the, what is the timeframe? The only reason why I ask is, you know, I don't know if the city and, I mean, the legislature and the state have got all their stuff finalized, how do we know what the UDO can be or can't be until they're done?
That's why we're hiring, that's why we're hiring the lawyer.
Can they even do it?
They say they can do it, yes.
'Cause I don't know if those things are still up for debate or change.
I don't know if, I, I didn't specifically ask about the time, timeframe, but I know Chatham's moratorium is only twelve months, so I would imagine that they were, you know, trying to move it along as quickly as possible.
And we have signed the contract with Dr. Yule and he has started. So, you know, between the, the, the impact study that he's doing and this, this should get us through, um, you know, the, the requirements that we have to do within the moratorium, 'cause the moratorium can't go on forever. It has to end and at some point, and we want to get these things done so it can end.
And Pointer Sproul, they'll be working with staff at the planning department, um, either they're gonna set up like a technical review kind of committee, but it will allow the third party to take a look at it and make their recommendations.
That way our UDO is fit with the state statutes.
State statutes is kind of, you know, local doesn't have much say, so I don't know if that goes in, then there isn't really much change at the moment, so.
I think they feel like there, there's, I mean, they think there's things that we can implement.
We're working with Chatham on this kind of collaboration.
Yes, sir.
It saves money doing that one, too. Okay. All right. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the proposal.
Okay. All right. Any more questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed?
Can you also find out a timeframe on that for us? Yes.
Okay, uh, item E, consideration of an economic development incentive agreement with Wyatt Holdings LLC doing business with, as advisor.
Madam Chair, we need a motion to excuse.
Yes. Okay, all those in favor of excusing Commissioner Sloan for this discussion, say aye. Aye opposed? Okay.
No, I didn't vote.
We'll, we'll come get you. Okay, Ms. Parrish.
Madam Chair, this, um, agreement is on for you on February twentieth of two thousand and seventeen. We held a public hearing, um, proposing to participate and at the time it was called Project Panda. The Pfizer is looking at, um, a tax code investment of at least one hundred million and the hiring of fifty new jobs with the average annual salary of ninety thousand dollars over a five-year period. The investment from the county will be up to one point four, one million, four hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars. Um, at the time of the public hearing, no one spoke in favor or in opposition. Um, the board at that time voted to approve the agreement and so now what's, um, in front of you is, is just the contracts and memorialize the agreement.
Okay. Any questions or comments from Ms. Parrish or?
What, what?
Any, any questions or comments on that?
I move to approve.
I'd say a million, four hundred and twelve versus a hundred million, I'd say that's a pretty good investment.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed?
No.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanna, I just wanna read something that was, that I found interesting and that I read in the Sanford Herald. It's, um, a quote from, um, Governor Cooper. Instead of, uh, continue to offer tax giveaways to millionaires and giant corporations, I urge legislators to work with me to invest in our schools and make North Carolina a top-ten educational state. So I just wanted to, that's, I'm the governor, so I just want to let you know that he's even thinking the same thing that we, you know, this is a corporation that has twenty-three billion in the bank, billion.
Look at our project that's already started.
Do you know when he said that? Do you know?
Exact date.
Well, I mean, was it a speech here?
No, 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 I don't know what the speech was. Yeah. I can't see the actual date.
That's okay. Okay.
That was recent, it was, it was this year.
Um, thank you. Okay, um, item F, request for approval of contract for courthouse architectural services with Mosley Architects. Okay. I was, I was gonna say, run against Commissioner Sloan.
You're fired.
Um, okay. Mr. Crowe.
Yes, ma'am. Um, the board approved back in September, uh, to hire Mosley Architect for the courthouse properties renovation project. Um, we've been negotiating with them since then on a contract. It's been difficult, um, mainly because we don't know what we're gonna end up designing and going forward. So, um, in the letter that they, um, gave to us, it starts on page one thirty-nine and goes to one forty, uh, really we're contracting here for phase one, which is really the examination and the operational analysis of the major, um, departments that are operating at the courthouse and then documenting what needs to be done going forward, which is a hundred and twenty-day process. And, uh, you know, that's an estimate of the amount of time that it's gonna be. And so they've given us an estimate of a not-to exceed fifty-three thousand, five hundred dollars. Um, and that all depends on how long it takes to interview everybody and come up with, uh, some recommendations on what to do going forward. So before they jump into phase two, which is the actual design, you know, we will approve what they're gonna do going forward. So, um, this is a hefty project and, um, I'm glad, um, Mr. Mace will be doing the interviews and not me.
What does this project cost then?
Well, upfront, um, that's part of the fifty-three thousand, five hundred dollars is to come up with the schematic drawings and to give us a budget going forward.
Those drawings on, for which building?
Yes, it'll be all of them. It'll be the bowling alley, the old courthouse, the new courthouse and the, the firehouse building.
The old firehouse building, okay.
So they'll give us an estimate of what it's gonna cost to address all these issues. So we're basically getting a schematic plan out there so that we'll know what to discuss going forward, 'cause I, you know, nobody has any idea what it's gonna cost us to, to address the issues. And that's what we're trying to get to.
What about the, these other properties? Would we be smart to wait and see or talk a little about what we need to do with those?
We can, we can. Right now, I think there's enough square footage in those four buildings that we should be able to address, um, the issues that we have, um, at the courthouse and maybe some other issues as well. But, um, you know, we're kinda getting into this without knowing what it's, um, we're paying them to tell us what it's gonna cost us in their, in their estimate.
Time is gonna be a factor.
Yes, sir. Well, the, the.
DA's office.
The DA, over the last two years, has gotten five new employees and they were already cramped to begin with. And, uh, and the clerk is running out of space for storage and is already having issues with grand jury and jury pool rooms and, and that kind of stuff. So, um, please, tell us what we can, we can't do and, and what we're gonna do.
And like with the DA's office, Doc, you know, that was a statutory thing, you know, they were, they had to add, what, three, um, victims assistance? I'm not sure what the terminology is, but, you know, um, so we've got to give them some space.
Well, I don't mind you getting one, but I want to, uh.
Any more questions or?
Yeah, I've got one.
Sure.
I wanna make sure that I understand who, who gets to call the shots. I know who gets the bill, so now I wanna know who gets. Is this something that we will have done for the county and then Department of Justice or the, anybody else involved in determining whether this is okay or not okay?
This board will decide whether the plan is okay or not. And really the only one that could probably overrule that is the Superior Court Judge who occupies that building and decides that they don't like it. But the architect also knows that he has to talk with that judge.
Right.
So I don't think he's gonna present anything that the judge would not accept and approve.
I don't disagree with that. If I can butter the judge up.
Well, well, I, I, but to know, to your point, to, to your point, I think, um, that this firm has history doing these types of projects.
I understand.
That's why we chose them.
Yes.
Yeah, I understand that, too. They have any history with this Superior Court Judge.
Um, that I don't know.
No.
If they're, if they have.
I would say no.
Do they have any history with?
Oh, I take that back. When we renovated the jail and the basement.
Superior Court Judge.
The Superior Court Judge, I believe that's in place, was here when we did all that and, you know, there was a little bit of an experience with the Superior at that time with some of the construction that was going on.
Well, maybe as, as we go.
Use them.
This one.
This one. How do we get a handle on what we're going to spend for these?
They're gonna estimate and give us a, and give us a menu of options.
You've got part of hand already, three thousand.
I see that.
There's a more coming.
And we'll probably have to borrow money to do it.
And prioritize.
I just want us to keep a, a tight rein on this process, you know, they can get out of hand before we know it and simply be told this is what we have to have.
Understood.
That's another question I'd have is the allocation of the space when you get through.
Yes, sir. This board, this board will go along with the plan that the architect comes up with on the allocation of the space.
Either we go along with it or we don't.
That's correct.
But we've had some meetings with the district attorney's office and with the judge.
And the clerk.
And the clerk.
And the register.
And the district deeds, so, you know, we may, as we start, as we start this process, maybe, you know, have a part two with that and so we don't have some of the issues maybe we've had in the past.
I'm sorry, I'm not as tactful as all of you, but I, I know that this bill could run up very quickly and simply be told, this board simply be told, oh, no, we have to have these things. I want a way to check off on them.
Moore County has just recently gone through the same issues. So the county commissioners kept a tight rein on it and sometimes you might have to fight a little bit.
We need to make it clear.
Renovations, because a lot of times they get away from you, you're running the things you're not expecting.
Sure.
And, uh, it, it tends to get away a lot of times.
Well, and that.
We have their, I'm sorry, we have their checklist of what they require, right? Yes.
You know, we can check it off, while they may want extras, this and that, that's on the checklist, so. We don't, they don't, hopefully they don't come back to us later and go, oh, by the way, since you're here, that's a good point, you know? If the architect says, well, you have this option, I'm sure I know which option they're gonna take.
I don't know.
You know, do we, you wanna constrain the architect with, within a certain budget? Is that, is that what you're trying to say, too?
That's what I.
I don't wanna give them a number.
No.
'Cause then if I guess too high, then.
We, we want the departments to understand that this is not our money, this is the taxpayers' money. So we want them to work with the architect to get what they need, not necessarily what they want. Bottom line. That's.
We'll see.
I remember later during the courthouse, we had a clerk that worked, who worked for the county. She did an excellent job, an excellent job, stayed on top of everything. I like having somebody on our team at the table all the time.
That's a good point. Okay, all right. Okay, so after all this discussion, is there a motion to approve the contract?
So move.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Okay. Stay on top of things. Okay, new business. Um, a presentation on Finley's Free Pantries. Ms. Ashley Braxton, thank you for your patience.
I'm a high school science teacher.
Oh, you have infinite patience. Thank you for your service in the high school.
Well, I'm Ashley Braxton, thank you for your time and letting me come here to talk to you.
Well, I'm Ashley Braxton, thank you for your time and letting me come here to talk to you about this. I've been born and raised here my whole life, so I'm, now I chose to teach here. And so, I invest a lot of my time in this community. And but, I just happened over the summer to come upon this idea that I wanted to start in the county and think it'd be very valuable. I'm naming it after my daughter, so on the, the pre, on the agenda, her name is spelled differently, but that's L-E-I-G-H is her actual name. That goes up at Finley. But where I got this idea from is I was just kinda thinking about what are ways to teach my daughter, other than just telling my daughter she needs to serve, actually show her and be a role model. And I just happened to be on social media one day. We tend to get on that every once in a while, don't we, happily? And I saw a video from people that have joined this organization, it's littlefreepantry.org. And so, it's not an idea, it's an original idea, but I've, I've taken it and kinda changed the procedures a little bit that the freepantry.org has done. And I just was like, oh, this would be great if somebody would do this in Lee County. And then I thought to myself where I could be that person, so that's where it kinda came from. And also, I was working on my national board last year, very hard process. And I worked a lot in the public library and I noticed that there was a lot of homeless people that sat there during the day. And I just kept noticing them being in the same places and I started to think about, well, how can I help with that? Cause ultimately, we teach our students and, and tell ourselves, it'd be so great, somebody else is gonna fix that when that happens. But at some point, you gotta step up and, and kinda contribute and do it yourself. So, that's where it came from. There's my, my pretty daughter up there. So, ultimately, what the purpose of this is, is to supply non-perishable food items. Some of my students came with, I didn't include in the presentation, but hygiene items, if approved, define that. First aid items, and I can't forget the animals, but cat and dog food and any warm things as far as blankets, mittens, hats, toboggans, any of those types of things to those in need or the homeless around Lee County. Again, and to teach my daughter Finley how to, to serve and also my students, cause they need to have a good role model as well. From there, they're actually doing a food drive this week to help raise donations for these pantries. So, where we have discussed our three locations is we, this is kind of going off of the CUC here. We know the CUC is here and it's a very valuable tool, but it's not open twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year to those that need it. So, these pantries are outdoor pantries that would be able to be open at any time that someone would need something out of them. The three sites, we've built three pantries so far. The three sites that we've gotten approved other than from your approval was the public library, the enrichment center on Third Street. And we're still in talks with the Section Eight Housing on Third Street. They're talking about requesting that the pantry is inside their facility versus on the outside. So, my pastor from my church is actually in more of a contact with them than I am. So, we're still working on how they would wanna work that upon your approval. But those are the three that we have been discussing. As far as them being outside, they will not be right next to roads. They will be on the other sides of sidewalks and easily accessible in safe ranges. And they've already been built and they also, the members of my church will help me install them. And they will be concreted down on, to make sure they're not easily moved as well. And the way that they'll be stocked is, the way that Little Free Pantry has done it in the past is whatever is stocked and somebody takes, then they actually replace when they can. The way that I've changed it is I want to make sure that I help regulate and control more of what is distributed to the public by being more of a distributor myself based on the donation, so I will know what goes in and out of the pantries. One, for public safety, and two, having my daughter's name on something, I wanna make sure that it is definitely taken care of. And so, I will be, and my family will be responsible of taking in all donations, sorting them, making sure they are up to standards and codes per the Good Samaritan law that we have to follow to make sure we're not liable. And then I will stock them. I will be checking the pantries three days a week, checking for splinters, any vandalism, if that was to come up. Any foods that may be damaged, leaking, expired, and removing any of those types of things and restocking as needed. So, it won't be where people can replace, I, I will be in control of that. At some point, if we were to have the approval of more than three pantries and be able to spread out, I obviously would want more people on my team to help regulate that, which my small church group would be the first people that I'd go to for that. As well as I run multiple clubs at, I teach at Southern Lee High School. And there's multiple clubs that wanna get involved on, on working through that and going and doing that with me and for me. So, I have a, a team that can come about for that, to help me with that. And but, I'll be making sure I check them as they should be every week to make sure that they're looking good and they're stocked the way they're supposed to be. And I wanted to make sure that you knew, which I'm sure you do have in, Whitney here, what laws help protect us from that. But I put in the PowerPoint the Good Samaritan law as far as what we need to follow and how, what level of food and the things that we need to, to go with to make sure that we're not held liable. These food pantries are covered under these laws. The littlefreepantry.org has already established that and has published this as part of their documentation as well. That anything that we do with that, as long as everything's up to, it could be sold in a grocery store and there's no malice behind what you're doing, you're protected by that law, so there wouldn't be a liability there. Somebody got a splinter or somebody got sick from some of the food, that would be in the pantries. And that just goes through both of the requirements. I believe that you have a copy of that in your notebook, so I'm sure that if you want me to go over those, I can. But I know that y'all are able to take a look at those as well. These are when we were building the pantries, so they don't have, they will have actual two-by-fours on the bottom to be concreted into the ground. But they're painted yellow and they do have plexiglass doors. This is just before the doors were put on. So, I'm working with Image One signs here in town to make the final letter signs to go on to the plexiglass doors. At the top, it'll say Finley's Free Pantries and then on either side of the bottom. The homelessness task force meeting that I went to suggested that I put a limit, don't just say take what you need on there. So, they said that I should put take one, it's free on it, and I will have that in English and Spanish. So, it'll be easily accessible to most of our demographic that's here in the county. And this is examples of some of the other completed pantries that were from the littlefreepantry.org and other places around. There's hundreds of success stories around the country of these things working with just people replacing it and not somebody regularly stocking it like I would be doing. So, I do know that it's definitely a valuable tool. When, before I met with the homelessness task force, I did the research on where do the most low-income families live. And typically, if you look in any city, the inner city is always gonna be the portion of the city that has the lowest income, just based on how cities are, are built up. So, that's why we kinda developed the three locations to be more of a triangle within that inner city area and where we got it from.
Does take one mean take one of each one of everything in there or just one item?
Well, ultimately, they can take what they need. The homelessness task force just to tell me to put take one on there. It could put take one item, whatever you would like the signage to say, based on your approval, I can make that happen. I know that more than one thing is gonna be taken, somebody could take everything on at one time. I know that that's probably going to happen. If they need it, they need it. If it's somebody that doesn't need it and takes it, then they obviously need it more than I do and that's okay. It's serving people. So, I can change the signage to whatever you would like upon your approval from there.
I'm just curious.
Did you say you had talked to folks at the library here?
Yes.
And what was their response in relation to this?
Oh, they were all for it upon your approval. I talked to the, the director and she thought it was a wonderful idea. So, and she was actually the one that told me, I actually got it approved through the city at first and the city never told me I had to come speak with you guys. So, she was actually the one that led me, led me to, Mr. Crump, in here and making sure I come and follow whatever procedures y'all have. So, I would have done this much earlier before they were built, but-
Where, where do you have some now in relation to Sanford and Lee County?
I believe the only one that I know that's closest to us is near the Harnett County Lee County line. I don't know who's in charge of restocking that or how that's going. I just know that's a recent thing that's been put up.
And you say you work in conjunction with your church?
Yes.
And who, who is the church, if you don't mind telling?
Oh, our churches, my church used to be Stanley Chapel, it's now known as Life Springs Church. They just recently changed their name. Yeah, with Pastor Dale and Pastor Shane there as well. So, they built them and they will help me install them. I'm still the main person that will begin to stock them and kinda regulate what goes on. But there's more than enough volunteers in the church that wanna help me do that if need be.
This is a, basically a modification to our property and you all technically have to approve it, I could not approve it. You also don't have a policy in place on doing something like this, so you, you know, the board really needs to consider that, but, you know, it's-
I was gonna ask you, do we need to set a policy and then a MOU, Martin method?
You know, I would, that was recommended by, by Whitney that, you know, we, we consider putting a policy and then having some minimal MOU with, with Ms. Braxton and try to figure out, you know, what to do there. But we don't really see any downsides. It's worth a shot, you know, really, to see how it works and-
I guess my question would be how fast does she need to move on this? I know we have hungry people out there.
One thing I forgot to add too is I have, for the coats and mittens, we added hooks to the bottom so we can easily hang stuff as well, needed for the mittens and scarves, so they can just take whatever they need. So, I forgot to add that, it was a modification from the original plans.
I think-
So, the, I know the Partnership for Children, they have this law of-
The little libraries.
Yeah, the little libraries.
Yes.
Very similar.
Where is that thing?
There's one right down the street.
Yeah, there's one right down there.
There's one on Summit as well.
But they're not on county property.
No, they, they, they put the libraries on private property, but, um, the reason you'd wanna have a policy is you'd wanna regulate it to make sure that, you know, we didn't have, you know, along the sidewalk in front of our properties, we had a whole row of, of these things.
Right.
You know, it's kinda like she's first one, first served, so, you know, she came up with the idea and, and I don't really see a problem with one of them, but I would have an issue with, you know.
When I think about, you go buy a quart of apple juice at the store, you had to get a monkey wrench to open it to get all the safety features off of it. So, what, you know, I'm thinking about someone. What is, what is the, if someone goes there and wants to throw some arsenic lead in a loaf of bread, you know?
I don't think, I don't think you can put a loaf of bread in there. I think most of it has to be packaged and, and the loaf of bread would be a problem, but-
Well, I wouldn't let something like that be in the pantries. So, it would have to be something individually wrapped or already sealed. I've already told the students that are gathering supplies, some of them were mentioning hygiene, hygiene items and mentioning the kits. And I told them they need to take the razors and things out, none of those types of things, no medicines. I've already kinda started self-regulating those types of things.
But I'm pretty sure you're familiar with what the government does to protect us when you go to the grocery store.
Well, yeah, well, I'm an AP environmental science teacher, so we talk a lot about that. When we get to the agriculture unit, so, yes, I do. Probably know more than I should and something.
Well, great idea. I mean, I, I, I think this is fantastic when I saw it in the agenda, cause I'm a big fan of the little libraries. And I thought, what a great concept, just taking it, you know, in a little bit different direction. One of the things though, about maybe putting some type of signage or whatever. The good thing about Lee County is we have, I mean, and you've been here, you know, everybody has a big heart and wants to help.
Right.
But the one thing that does concern me a little bit is, you know, I love the idea with the hats and the mittens, being able to hang them on the outside for them to just get, and it doesn't take up space. But at the same time, if there could be a little blurb or something that says, this is not a drop-off for clothing. Or, I mean, you know, the, the, and I, I really, this is a question I have for anybody. The big boxes that you see in the parking lots, like at Kmart and Walmart, where people drop clothes off, you know, I, I, I'm not, I, I mean, I don't know who runs that or who collects it, but sometimes you'll see just maybe eight or ten garbage bags of clothing and it's been kinda ruffled through and stuff, and then it's pouring down rain and it's out there. So, I mean, again, like you said, it's got your daughter's name on it. And I know with my kids, you know, I'd, I'd want it to be right and not abused.
Absolutely.
You know, but that's just a suggestion, it's maybe just a little something, I, you know, of course, people are gonna do what people are gonna do. But, you know, if they see clothing hanging on the outside, I know somebody will get the idea, oh, well, I'll just put a box of clothes there, you know, to help out too, and their hearts in the right place. But, but sometimes that might create a problem for you just trying to keep it, you know?
I like it better if they were next to the little library and to the shelters that are being proposed. As opposed to the public library and the senior citizens. I just think we're adding to some, some traffic that could generate potentially more problems. We've had some dicey situations at the library already. When you start getting involved with, this is the last can of apple juice. Don't know who's gonna be struggling over the app, apple juice. I just feel, and this is just me, I would feel better if it's not on county property. We don't have a policy and I don't know the extent of liability we'd be facing. You could talk about being good Samaritan, but people look at big pockets, they don't care anything about good favors. They wanna know who got the money. And that's what we be looking at at some point. That potential is there when you agree with it or not. Keep talking, I'm just, that's just me.
Should this board table this until we can at least come up with a policy and study it a little more? And maybe she can come back next, in January and we can have something in place to, I mean, I, I, I know people out there, that we have hungry people out there. We need to help them. I agree with you.
Commissioner Reeves.
Yeah, yeah. You know, we, you know. Could we at least have staff to look at what a draft policy?
Well, I think we, I think we can draft the, the policy and draft the MOU. And, you know, we're, we're talking about two locations right now. You may wanna do a trial and just see how it works, cause I don't-
It's feeding, you know, I mean, I'm all for providing food for the hungry, I am, and Sheldon, but I think this is something we need to kinda look at. Make sure we're going the right way with it.
Have you talked to anybody about putting one, like at the depot park?
The people that, yes, the people I contacted never contacted me back about it. I actually reached out to them before the library, actually.
Okay. Cause that's, I mean, I was just thinking that, um, okay. We need, we need to, we need to put the MOU together to, I mean, and that's as much to protect you, you know?
Absolutely.
You need to put a policy.
And put the policy together. Yeah, and, and put a policy together.
Can we have to the sixteenth, you know, with the second being right after the holidays? If y'all make a motion.
Sixteenth of what?
Sixteenth of January.
Yeah, well, January, we'll, we'll, we'll meet on the second of January, but with the holidays, yes, to do the policy and then work on the MOU. That might be a little tight, but the sixteenth.
So, the motion is to table it to the next meeting? Can we do that?
No, until the sixteenth.
I would, yeah, make a motion to have staff bring back an MOU and a policy at the, at the January sixteenth meeting.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
We meet on January second. But that's gonna be-
You're off together.
With the things that we have going on the next couple of weeks, I think it's gonna be difficult for us to get it done. Given us to the sixteenth, we can get that done.
But it's a great idea. I think everybody's in favor of helping you get those actually put somewhere so they can help folks.
Okay, so I hold off on putting them up anywhere right now, correct? Okay.
On county property, the library and the enrichment center.
Right.
Sure.
But I mean-
You're working with the housing authority on the, um, the other location, that'd be entirely up to them.
Okay.
Right. But, but we'll figure it out. I think it's a great idea.
See, all this, I'm like, you check with them.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Thank you so very much. Thank you so very much.
Are you gonna?
You gotta take a look?
Take a look.
Yes, yes. Okay, there's a motion to work on the formulated policy and an MOU and present it at our January sixteenth meeting. Okay? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. The next request, oh, we've already moved Ms. Davidson up to consent, so B was moved to consent. C, approved selection of architectural firm selection for the Otis Sloan and Kiwanis Children's Park master plan, Mr. Payne.
About Chair, Mr. Michael Silverman has been a man with many talents. Doing lots of things, but he, we came up with an RFQ largely through his efforts to put that together. And we sent that out and the first of November, we received seven submittals. And Michael, Lisa Mentor and I had a scoring grid, we went through there, we scored them. And Michael, uh, Lisa Mentor, and I, uh, had a scoring grid, we went through there, we scored them on six different areas. And then we compared notes and we came up with Withers and Ravenell as the, uh, as the lead, uh, as the, perhaps the, the first choice. Uh, that was because, uh, they are familiar, by having done a, a, a number of projects in Sanford and Lee County. Part of their team's a local civil engineer, uh, Jeremy Thomas, who's done a lot of work for us and is familiar with a lot of our properties already. And they also have, um, Mary Henderson, who is retired former Parks and Recreation Director for the town of Cary, who, uh, who was there for a long time, and so I think she's a, a great resource, uh, to be a part of that team, so.
Any questions or comments?
You say this group has been here in Sanford and Lee County, what are the last projects that they've worked on here?
Uh, I know that they've done some work with the city, and of course Jeremy Thomas, who's the civil, uh, part of that team, has worked at OT Sloan recently, uh, he's worked at.
Doing what?
San Lee Park, uh, storm drain, uh, we had to, uh, have the storm drain, uh, begun over at, uh, OT Sloan, that's the most recent. Prior to that, uh, he engineered the, uh, septic line from the new nature center down to where the, the old nature center was, and we tied in with that system down there. So, and he's done quite a few projects, Temple Park, uh, he's been over there to, to look at the drain under Field Two over there. So, he's, he's familiar with a lot of the dirt and the, the things that we're up against, uh, around the county.
So what's the biggest intent from the master plan staff going, I mean, explain what you hope to see out of this, I guess would be what I would ask.
Looking, looking forward at new trends, uh?
Really, the master plan, um, like the city's master plan that they did, they've done on parks, is to get you ideas on, uh, new elements that you wanna put at the parks and upgrade the parks. So we're, you know, we have issues, um, at these parks where the equipment's outdated. Um, we have issues with our tennis courts that are crumbling, um, we have issues with our pool being a nineteen seventies vintage pool with a bath house that's really not functional, so, you know, we're hoping to bring them in. Plus, we have that area, um, that, uh, Mr. Sloan gave us that we haven't used yet, and trying to have them come up with a complete site plan, um, that we can use to bid projects in the future and, uh, upgrade the facilities. That's really what the purpose of the master plan is.
What, let me ask you a question, OT Sloan Park, I'm, isn't that the one where they were talking about we got such a change in elevation and?
Yes, sir.
Well, what, on the master plan, what are we looking to use that property for? Would, I mean, for what kind of facility?
Uh, Don Kavaskis and I, or Don's, I don't know how many scenarios he's done for me over there as, as far as locating ball fields. Uh, another large building, the CIP that I submitted, uh, last year called for about a thirty thousand square foot building. Uh, that would go on the new property that, uh, Mr. Sloan gave us back in two thousand eight, I believe.
Multipurpose facility that would, really, the main occupant of that facility would be gymnastics. The facility that we occupy for gymnastics is completely inadequate, and we've got seven hundred kids, particip- six, seven hundred kids.
We had, uh, eighteen hundred and, and some throughout the course of last year, eighteen hundred kids that were involved.
In gymnastics, so dealing with a building that really doesn't have the high ceilings that we need. Um, and so, that is the one program we do have, um, that makes money in Parks and Rec. That we don't supplement, it carries its own weight, and so, um, we continue to pay rent on that building, um, that we're occupying. But at some point, you know, if it's not now, we've outgrown it, so having a multipurpose facility that we could do gymnastics, occasional basketball and volleyball.
So we're not looking to go in a, in an extensive way from ball fields or stuff like that?
Yes, sir.
I think, um, I don't know that that facility is really big enough for the, for what I call a multi-sports complex type thing, it's just not enough acreage. Um, you know, as it is, the, the one baseball field we have out there is really more of a football field now, so. Um, and then, of course, we got the Boys and Girls Club there that we, you know, perpetually leased that property to, that kinda is in the way, um, in a good way there, so. Anyway, this is, uh, you know, to bring these experts in to, to make a plan, you know, for what we can do in the future, and it's certainly not to go out and start bidding this stuff right away, 'cause obviously we have to figure out a way to pay for that stuff, but, um, I would say that, um, the children's park probably has a higher priority mainly because of the city's, um, revitalization and the, um, Greenway Trail, it'll be going right by it, so. And it's a heavily used park, the Kiwanis Children's Park.
Do you have any idea what we're talking about here as far as money for this study?
Um, the city spent about seventy to seventy-five thousand for theirs.
About seventy-five thousand, yes.
Yes, so, it would be, you know, when we sit down and negotiate with them, we'll, we'll come up with a not-to exceed fee.
Have you taken a look at the city's seventy-five thousand dollar plan?
Yes, sir, and we can draw, uh, some of the information from that.
I sure hope you can draw more than.
Why can't you draw a holding?
Yeah, I'm serious.
Well, we're looking at developing site-specific master plans as opposed to, we've got general feedback as to what, uh, the folks in the city say, what they, uh, determine, this is what we'd like to see, you know, we can go from that, but as far as site-specific, they can tell us, well, you could do this, you can include this, but you might not wanna do this, you know, something else, that sort of, based on your findings.
Does the city's master plan, that it was more things that would be built in the future? Not, I mean, what we're looking at is what we already have, and how can we upgrade and retrofit and repurpose?
Yeah.
Is that a good way to put it?
I think so.
Repurpose is a good word.
Now.
OT Sloan's forty, forty-two years old.
I'm afraid so, yeah.
And it's showing it.
His courts have been resurfaced.
Yes, sir, we did an overlay in ninety-nine on those court, on those courts over there, up there, they cracked all the pieces down. Same way at, uh, OT Sloan and Children's Park. Uh, we had to go in there and put some tar in one over, uh, Children's Park place, afraid we might lose the young, and then some of those guys there.
I mean, it's getting to the point where Doc, you know, E- Eastly Middle School, their tennis team played over at Kiwanis, uh, not Kiwanis, at, uh, OT Sloan, and it, I mean, it was rough.
All three middle schools have tennis programs now, but they don't have tennis courts.
It, it was rough. We, we got fortunate a couple of times where they could play at the high school, but their tennis seasons are the same, so, you know, it was difficult to coordinate. Um, as we're talking about this, I mean, is there a necessity or necessity? Should we include the new acreage we acquired out at, um, San Lee in this, or do we kinda already have a plan for that?
That's pretty much open space and it's.
Just bike, more bike trail or something?
Right now, it's gonna be buffer.
Okay, okay.
We had an opportunity to, to purchase some additional land that, uh, joined us, and, and we took it, and, uh, I appreciate, uh, the board in stepping up to make that possible for us to do.
One of the things Mr. Payne and I talked about, um, when I've talked with Mayor Mann, is would we be able to include, um, Temple Park in this as well?
We can always ask.
I mean, how, you know, how does the board feel about that? I know, I, you know, as, as the city tries to revitalize East Sanford, um, you know, and I know the mayor has some things he's gonna announce shortly, um.
There was also a discussion to add Horton Park as well, so.
Yes, mhm.
But, um, yeah, we can always have them, uh, give us a price for that, but our real attempt was to be on top of.
OT and Sloan.
Because they were the priorities at this point, just mainly because of use. But, um, you know, the city, when we have our joint boards meeting, uh, the city wants parks to be at the top of the agenda in Horton and Temple, um, or at the top of their, uh, wanted discussions with us.
So, I mean, this, this can be flexible, I mean, you know, if we approve this tonight, we can add additional, okay.
Or some track.
Or some track.
Or some track. Depending on the price tag.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Okay, any more questions or discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving, uh, Withers, Ravenell for the, um, Parks Master Plan, say aye, aye, opposed? Okay, thank you, Ms. Davidson, thanks. Okay, um, oh, the request for approval of proposed Lee County Post sixty-five health insurance. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tonight, tonight I bring to you, um, a renewal for our Post sixty-five health insurance plan, and, um, described it here, I'm sure you've read this, but this saves the county a lot of money. Prior to two thousand ten, we had our retirees on regular county health insurance, and we changed to a Post sixty-five plan for our employees. Um, as the note said, that we did get a high cost of an increase, and we said no, and we sent it out to our brokerage to bid on it, and Aetna came back and gave us a decent quote. The cost of change would, would, would really not without way, it would be too much confusion for the Post sixty-five retirees, um, 'cause they don't really like change. When we went to this plan, it was kind of tough at first, I'm sure y'all got, some of you got calls about it years ago. But we, they're really happy with Aetna and what Aetna does for them, we have very few, very few complaints about Aetna. Um, but I'm asking you tonight to approve the, um, renewal with Aetna.
I just wanna point out that medical trend, trend is twelve percent right now, and we're beating.
I know, this is amazing.
In our normal health plan and in this health plan, we're still beating the trend, so we're doing pretty well.
Okay, the motion to approve, any questions for? I just wanna say, great job. I mean, when, when everybody's on pins and needles about health coverage, and I looked at this and then went, um, on your spreadsheet where you had the comparisons year to year, that, that's impressive, so, thank you. Okay, all those in favor say aye, aye, opposed? Okay, thank you so much. All right. Okay, um, the request for approval of bid from C and D Heating and Cooling Incorporated for the hot water boiler system replacement at the county and the jail, Mr. Spivey, good evening.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Commissioners, uh, to come to you tonight, this is gonna be a complex, a project, and what it consists of, this is the boilers for the courthouse. These are the boilers that does the hot water, also for the jail facilities, and also for the kitchen part. Now, it's gonna take some working because it's gonna be downtime for each change out. Uh, I, I required a mandatory pre-bid, and the reason why I did it is such a complex project. Uh, we had six bidders to show up, I had five return bids, uh, the gentleman, uh, C and D Heating out of, uh, McCall South Conover Low Bid, I had ninety-five thousand budget, and he came within it ninety-four, eight, eighty-four. I requested that he provide us with references, he provided us with five references. I've got a letter recommendation from the, uh, I'm using Bowers Consultants out of Charlotte as my engineering, uh, and he'd sent me a letter and apologized when I haven't had the package, but the bids were due back on the fifteenth, and I didn't have the time to get this in the package, but he's, uh, the gentleman's already made his schedule out, he's already checked on the, um, randomness of the, uh, equipment being there. But now I'm gonna have to work closely with the jail operation and also with the meals on wheels for the, uh, enrichment center to, it's gonna be some things we'll have to work through, so hopefully you don't get any calls, but hopefully we can work it out, you know, but, uh, I'm asked that they will move forward with this, and, uh, in his references, um, he has done three projects at Fort Rag, and he's done some, uh, some similar type projects, so he does have some experience in this type of situation.
Madam, are we approving the request?
Let me ask you a question about that.
Yes, sir.
Does he, do we get any kind of warranty with one of these systems?
Yes, you get a warranty with it. Um, I don't remember, I had to check in, but you get a, a certain amount of warranty with, it's like every time we change a, you know, in our HVAC, you get certain components of the equipment, like the, uh, tanks that go with this, and you will get some warranty with it. Uh, I, I don't have the information with us, or do you do get some warranty with it?
Some warranty.
Oh, the recentness that came forth, and Mr. Crumpton has been really, we had a situation last year where we had one of the tanks to fail, and we were down for like, what, four or five days, Mr. Crumpton, and we had to work to get it, 'cause these tanks are not sitting on a shelf somewhere. So one of the things that I requested, these are the holding tanks, 'cause these holding tanks are like five hundred gallons for the jail kitchen and also for the, uh, jail facility itself, the showers and stuff, is I've got an extra tank to have on, on stock in the case we have a failure, we don't have a couple of days down. Um, the requirements for the jail kitchen, we had to have like a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty degree water leaving for the boiler room going to the jail to make sure that we keep this, the, uh, right temperatures for the health department to, you know, operate the jail.
Who keeps the tank on, who keeps the tank, you keep the tank or they keep the tank?
No, the tanks, they can, they'll, they'll be surplus.
It'll be an extra tank.
Yeah, they, we'll keep the extra tank.
Thank you.
That's for us to keep in the mechanical room, it, I misunderstood your question, sorry about that.
Was this in your budget last year?
Yes, it was, I had, uh, not, I had budget in ninety-five. Uh, the complex of the project is you got the two heating boilers in the same room, and what's so bad is you've got to take the existing boilers out, the existing tanks out to get all that stuff, it's gonna be, and it's just up on the, well, I would say the third level of the jail. And then you, you can, you gotta have a crane to get everything in and out, because you're going out to, if you're looking at the jail when you're coming up on, uh, Elm Street side, you see two double doors at the third level up there, that's where the mechanical room is. It's really complex, and that's the reason I required that they be to look at this, it's one of those jobs you don't bid on and you come back, and.
Right.
It's really, really.
Gotta know what you're doing.
Yeah, you, you gotta know what's going on here, that's quite the involvement.
Russell, it said in here, you know, ninety days.
Yes.
Basically, how, how, but, I mean.
Well, we, what I done, once we, we looked at the project, I took everybody down, backed down to the conference room, the sheriff's department.
All right.
And with the contractors, they felt that they could do that in ninety days, we talked about sixty days, but ninety days. But now, the, what we're gonna try to do, I've already talked a little bit with architect, I mean, with the engineering, we're gonna try to do, try to keep at least one of these hot water heaters up, you know, during the change out, so that's our intent. So we've talked, he's talked briefly with the, with the C and D gentleman, and hopefully we can do that. But, you know, we, you never know, it's just like when you get into renovations, what you may run into. We've had a lot of, in this, we've had a lot of water issues at this jail anyway with, uh, once the city put the new water tank on, our pressures went from like forty pounds to like close to eighty, ninety pounds of pressure, so that changed things quite a bit.
Okay. Okay.
You've got one local bid, I appreciate you.
Yeah, uh, it sure did, he, he really worked hard on it too, so, yeah. He was the, in, in checking what I had done, uh, Mr. O, he was the only one I could, that I know of had, that had, actually had, you gotta have a, a license, required license for that.
You have to have the state inspect those tanks.
Yes, and that's part of it, so, so the way, the way that these tanks, these boilers are inspected every two years, and what they, the part of the package is that's the requirement, they will get this done upon installing other, other, uh, tanks. Good question, ma'am.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve, any more questions or comments? All those in favor say aye, aye, opposed? Thank you so much.
Thank y'all so much, have a good night.
You too. All right, budget amendment, item F, Ms. Mentor. Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening. You should have before you budget amendment number five. The abstract is on page 175, and the actual amendment's on 176 of your agenda package. This budget amendment appropriates, let me, excuse me, $1,000 for emergency services. This is money that's been received from the North Carolina Division of Emergency Management to purchase a weather station and software for the emergency services department's use. You also are appropriating $20,000 in the Commissioner's budget for professional service for a natural gas development study that you approved. And then in general services, you're adding $1.1 million for the purchase of the property that you approved earlier tonight. That includes closing costs that we may have to pay. And hopefully we're a little on the high side on the closing cost. Senior services, you're approving $1,350 in additional grant funds that are received from the senior health insurance information program. Those funds are to be used to purchase a laptop. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Motion?
It's approved.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Thank you. All right, county manager's report.
Ms. Mayor and Chair, I have one report I'm going to hand out to you. This came from the Community College, and it came after the agenda went out. But I thought it was important to give you the update on the buildings. Should have ribbon cutting soon on the emergency services training building. The project is essentially 100% complete. I have a picture of it on the front page. The new health sciences building is on schedule to be completed in April of 2018. 62% complete at this time. The Vet Tech building is 64% complete and expected to be completed in April of 2018 as well. The Wicker Center addition is scheduled to be completed in April of 2018 with Phase Two. The renovation of the existing building is scheduled to be completed in July of 2018. So, the addition is 62% complete at this time, and it looks really good if you've been out there. And the last project is the various interior renovations, which only the Hakaday project, building has been completed. And they'll start doing more at Hakaday in early 2018 and hopefully complete Joyner at Hakaday in March to October 2018. So, the renovation piece will be a little bit behind. But anyway, they're spending money, and Ms. Mitter is giving it to them.
I wonder if the emergency services came in under budget?
Pardon?
I wonder if the emergency services building that's finished came in under budget?
They haven't come to us and asked for more money than what was budgeted. So, we can only assume that they're under budget. If they needed more money than what's budgeted, they'd have to come to you and ask for it. Because we're not going to give it to them. We don't have the, we don't have the authority to give it to them, number one. But number two, we know that the board wants to approve that. Back to my report, the Colon Road Water Project. We got delayed a little bit on some documents related to permit approvals and a easement. But all of those have been approved, and we had some design changes that had to be made. But we lost a few weeks, but the bid should be released before Christmas, and we are targeting the January 16th meeting to bring you the bids for approval. So, construction should take 60 days, and we're anticipating completion date will be around April 1st. So, we are moving along. The library received a gift from the Friends of the Library. They got a new circulation desk. The desk replaces the old one. There's some added counter and storage along the back wall. So, we're appreciative to the Friends for their support. That was quite an expense there that they kicked in for. The Saga audit is complete. I've seen it twice and have forwarded it to the Executive Committee for their approval on this Thursday. If the Executive Committee approves it, it'll go before the full board at the December 20th meeting, and I have made a request for copies to come to us. Upcoming meetings, we have the joint elected boards with Saga, the City of Sanford, and the Town of Broadway this Thursday, December 14th at 6:00. And then you can see all the other closings for the holidays. And a reminder that in January, because of holidays, we'll be meeting twice on Tuesdays, not Mondays. So, hopefully everybody makes that change to their calendar and make it on the 2nd and the 16th.
And the retreat. Do we have the times for that, John?
No, ma'am, we need to get with you. And typically, we meet late in the day on Thursday and have dinner, make a couple of presentations, and then we get going early on Friday and go until everybody's had enough.
Okay. Just my question, I'm sorry.
No, I just want to know, do we have an agenda for Thursday's meeting?
We do, and I will send it out to the board. And I think it was finalized. That's the chair. I know it went back out to the chair and the mayor's for final approval, so...
And that was on Friday. So, they were tweaking it today. So, it should go out tomorrow. I have not had a chance to look at my email today, but I know we kind of got the final draft on Friday.
It's at the McSwain Center.
Okay, I'm kind of especially, to Commissioners Dodson, Connect, Sharp, and Sloan. When we're looking at the board retreat on January 25th and 26th, that's a Thursday and a Friday. Like Mr. Crumpton said, you know, typically, we like to have dinner and like a presentation that night. Is 5:30 or 6:00 better to start for y'all?
Just 5:30 is good.
5:30? Is 5:30 okay? Okay, I just, while I had all of you here, that was just easier than calling you later. Okay, so, let's just go ahead and say we'll start on the 25th at 5:30 because we already have, I mean, the nature center's booked, correct? Okay, so, we'll start at 5:30. At the, we're going to do it at the nature center at Sanley Park in the new multipurpose room and have dinner there and a presentation. And then we'll get back with you on the timeframe on Saturday. But usually we do like, what, 9 to 2, something like that?
On Friday.
I mean, on Friday. Right, right, right. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Not adding an extra day. Yeah, on Friday.
We'll have lunch Friday for you, and it'll all go along in text to go through the items. And of course, you know, Michael Silverman is putting the, he is going to be the master of ceremonies this year, and so he's going to help lead the charge here. And so, if you have any issues that you would like...
That is an issue.
Please get with Michael, and he'll put it on the agenda.
Yeah.
So, if you want to hear any reports from departments? Because we'll give the typical financial rundowns where we see budget going for next year and that kind of stuff. But anything outside of budget or financial review, any issues you want us to put on there, we'll be glad to.
What was Friday? You just have to start date for Friday?
Uh, Friday, usually we do like 9 to 2. Or as long as you want to stay and hang out.
All day.
We'll be out at the nature center. You can always go for a nice hike afterwards.
Yeah.
Maybe bring your bike out. Go ride the bike trail.
Okay. Anything else? Okay.
And I wish everybody happy holidays, Merry Christmas. We won't be again until January 2nd. See you next year.
Friday? Well, we'll get together Thursday night. Hopefully everybody can make that, though. That's good.
But I'm hoping not to have to say anything Thursday night.
Okay. All right. All right. Commissioners' comments. Commissioner Dodson?
I just thank everybody for coming. Wish everybody a Merry Christmas. Yeah, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and drive safe in your travels. Also, keep people on prayers in New York City. I just got another bombing attack this morning. And don't forget the cold days, the elderly, make sure they're okay and their moms. Appreciate it. Thank you.
I would wish everybody Merry Christmas and these well-behaved kids on the front. We make extra long lists for Santa Claus. And I would just say, spend some time with your families. Tell them you love them. Shout out to Salvation Army. We did a lot last week, the angel tree, all that stuff. And I think we served about 400 folks that had kids that were, may not, were less fortunate. Let's just say that. And lastly, the cameras that are installed at the courthouse are awesome. I was at Kyle's office today looking at all the different screens, and all of them are up except for two. And that's, I was impressed with the, yes, absolutely. Yeah, that's all I have.
So, I would like to express the same sentiments of Merry Christmas and happy holidays. I hope everyone has a safe one and enjoys their time with their families. And then I've had, I know Doc probably talked about the trash. I had a gentleman come to my table Friday night, and he and his son had tried to clean up some trash. So, I would like to ask for some help. He's contacted the state, but apparently someone threw out, he thinks they covered burn barrels with black plastic and rolled them out the back of their truck. But they're on the highway right next to his house, John Rosser Road and Dixie Farm Road intersection. But he says he can't move them, they're so heavy. And so, I'd like for somebody to try to do that because he has been monitoring that road and taking initiative to pick up the trash. So, I think we ought to at least try to help him.
John Rosser Road and Dixie Farm Road?
They rolled them, they're in the ditch. They were on the right of way originally, but I think in them, when the mower come by, they pushed them in the ditch.
You still might could get some help there from DOT.
He's called them, he said they came out and moved just small trash before this happened, but this has happened since.
Since then?
And so, he's trying to catch whoever's doing it. He's monitoring the road.
That's good.
I got to give them kudos for that. And then I still get calls about water on Hunter Farm Road, which, as long as I'm a commissioner, I think that'll happen. And I'd like to try to help them at some point, sometime, if at all possible. And I've had some calls out in the Lee's Chapel Church Road with the talk about running sewer to the mega site and all, would there be a possibility of water being run in that area? And so, that's something I'd like to have discussion with the interlocal agreement.
Lee's Chapel Road Water?
Yes, sir. It's kind of out behind the airport. But I thank all the staff for all the work that they've done. And like I said, I wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Well, Commissioner Sloan's right. I'm going to talk about trash. We have a problem. And I think I've talked about it enough that everyone knows it. I hope that in our retreat, we can get all the board together, and we can work with maybe the Sheriff's Department and do whatever we've got to do to improve our trash situation in this county. If you get out and ride around the county, it's very evident. You don't have to look for it, it's there. And we need some help. And again, I'd like to thank the staff for all they've done this year and wish everyone a Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
That's it?
That is it.
Okay.
Who's all this good stuff from, though? We didn't get to thank you.
One is Quapup extension. I don't know who the white bag came from. The white bag came, I just want to say, thanks.
I did want to tell you, thank you, fool me, I thought that was a check in that green.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Well, first of all, I just, you know, enjoyed working with this board this year. And we've got a great thing. And I appreciate your support and confidence. And I'll dedicate the next 12 months to working really hard. Phone's always on, door's always open for the whole board. And just, we've got great things happening in the county. And that's because of everybody sitting up here. And a great, great staff, best staff in the whole country as far as I'm concerned. And good partnerships with the other boards that we work with in the county. And I think it's just that teamwork and camaraderie and being able to communicate makes a big difference. So, for me, that's the best Christmas present, is just being here and near family and friends and being able to enjoy. So, I do wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, happy holidays. And Doc, you and I, we're, we got to sit down with these DOT people or something because I thought of you the other day. I was going to a meeting, and somebody, evidently, you know, prisoners or maybe it was adopted highway folks or somebody had done a really good job and picked up trash and put them in the trash bags. And dag on it, I sat right there or drove, sitting in my car, and watched the mowers just go right over the trash bags on the side of the road and mow over the trash bags and spewed it all over. Now, let me tell you, if I had needed to be where I had to be, and I was hoping, you know, I may have gotten some ad that a call Sergeant SD saw me or one of the deputies, but I was so infuriated, I couldn't understand it, that they couldn't get off the tractor and move the bag behind them and then keep mowing. I don't understand. But we, that's part of the problem too. Because I started, once I had that in my mind, I started noticing some of the other areas. I think that's what happened there too, when you just see this big, you know, conflagration of trash, you know, that you think nobody could have thrown that much out. I bet you anything that's what happened because I saw it with my own two eyes. So, we need to...
You need to get them involved too.
Something, because...
Like I asked Commissioner, if it's on the right of way, they're supposed to clean it up. We're not supposed to.
And I mean, it was already in a nice neat bag and everything for somebody to pick up, and they just ran over two of them while I was driving by. And I thought, oh, my goodness. So, anyway, we still have some work to do on that, but we're starting to put things together. But anyway, everybody be safe in your travels. And we are so glad you're here, but we are entertaining, I'm entertaining a motion now to let you go home. Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Thank you very much.